The meeting to order, we will do our pledge of allegiance. And after reciting the pledge of allegiance, I'm asking you to stand, remain standing, to take a moment of silence to honor the victims, not only in Texas, but also today in Northern California. And I hope this will be the last time I have to hold yet another moment of silence. And while we're holding a moment of silence, I'd also like to pay tribute to the victims of sexual assault across the country. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Price is absent. Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember McCoy?
Present.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Mayor Bill DeLaPeña?
Present. Thank you. We don't have any requests for continuance. And we also have no special presentations this evening. Let's see here, we have public comments. Madam Clerk?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. We have one individual who has presented a card in pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. And as you said, we only have one public speaker, and that's Mr. Adam Haverstock from our wonderful five-star chamber. Good evening.
Thank you. When I heard there's only one speaker, I kind of figured it was me, so I thought I'd make my way up here. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Adam Haverstock, I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce. I have a couple items to report to you tonight. The first I wanted to let you know about is the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors had their retreat last Tuesday. We're over the Reagan Library, which is lovely, but I bring it up because I wanted to mention that Chris Shaver from Shaver Automotive Group was selected as our chairman for 2018. And I also wanted to report that Angel Robertson, who is our outgoing chair, is going to serve as the chair of the Greater Cano Valley Community Foundation, our nonprofit arm for the 2018 term as well. On the subject of retreats, the Cano Valley Tourism Improvement District Board of Directors had their annual membership meeting and retreat this afternoon. And they also selected new officers. Kim Carteno, who's the Director of Sales at Sheraton Agora Hills, is going to be chair for the next year, starting on January 1st. Sean Brioti, who is Director of Sales at Courtyard by Marriott in Newbury Park, will serve as the vice-chair and also presumably the chair-elect. Mary McVicker from the Hampton in Newbury Park was selected as the treasurer. And the tourism district approved its budget for 2018. And in that budget, we are projecting that the hotels in the area are going to have a rev par, that revenue per available room, of $102, which is a wonderful improvement over previous years. By my estimation, that means the amount of TOT collected by both the cities of Thousand Oaks and Agora Hills will be about $7,125 million, which is above what I think the cities are projecting, which is a good number. And then we have a couple events I want to let you know about. The first one is the chamber's Taste of Cano is coming up this Friday, November 17th. It's going to be at the Four Seasons Hotel over in Westlake Village. It's the largest public event that's held at the Four Seasons every year, and people can get tickets at tastefcaneo.com. We're going to have over 60 food, wine, beverage of other types vendors at that event. Please, we would love to see everyone there. And as I said, tickets are online. Our entertainment is going to be dueling pianos. And then finally, of course, I wanted to mention the upcoming State of the City, which is going to be on Tuesday, December 5th, from 11:30 to 1:30 at California Lutheran University. We also have some very engaging speakers at that event, including Mayor DeLaPeña giving the State of the City, so we're looking forward to that. And tickets for that event are on sale at canohchamber.org if anyone's interested in purchases. And unless there are any questions, that does conclude my report this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would imagine, Mr. City Manager, you don't have any comments or follow-ups? Okay, very good. Thank you. We now have our consent calendar. And I'm looking, are there any items? You want to poll, half-poll, no? Then I'm looking for a vote. Mr. Adam?
No, thank you, Mayor. I'll move the consent calendar.
Please vote.
Madam Mayor, I just want to confirm that we don't have a public speaker for consent? We do not. Is that correct? The motion passes 4-0, and your ordinance title is an ordinance adding Title V, Chapter 29, amending Sections 9-4.202 and 9-4-2105, repealing in its entirety Title IX, Chapter 4, Article 44, and amending Title V, Chapter 26 of Municipal Code Regarding Commercial Cannabis, Personal Cannabis Cultivation and Social Host Liability (MCA) 2017-70260.
Thank you. Okay, we now go to the only item on the agenda tonight, which is marijuana. This will be a new policy that we are deciding tonight. The presentation will be made by our Community Development Director, Mr. Mark Towne, and he will have the experts there seated to his left. And this is a hearing, so go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding Municipal Code Amendment MCA 2017-70260, adding regulatory ordinance for commercial cannabis and personal cannabis, and modifying zoning ordinance and social host liability ordinance regarding cannabis. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers will have five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The purpose of this item that we're going to be discussing tonight is to introduce an ordinance regarding the regulation of commercial cannabis in the city. And what we will be presenting tonight is in direct response to direction that was provided by city council at your meeting of July 11th of this year. In terms of the sort of chronology, how we got to this point, the state adopted a law back in late 2015, which basically allowed provisions for medical cannabis use in the state. Following, on the heels of that, the city adopted an ordinance prohibiting medical cannabis and personal cultivation, really so that we would have an opportunity to study the issue and to seek public input on the topic of cannabis. Last November, voters approved Prop 64, which allowed for consideration of non-medical cannabis use in cities and counties throughout the state. Last year, also on the heels of that, the city adopted an urgency ordinance that extended the previous prohibitions from medical cannabis to include non-medical cannabis. City also did allow at that time, personal cultivation limited under limited conditions in compliance with state requirements. In March of this year, the state basically combined the two previous laws into one more comprehensive set of regulations. And then the city adopted a regular ordinance at the same time to extend our urgency, or to actually replace the urgency ordinance that we had adopted in December. We also came to this point through significant public outreach and community input from a variety of sources. From March to June of this year, the city conducted several public surveys to gauge public sentiments on the topic. At the end of March of this year, we also had a public workshop, as I'm sure you recall, to solicit community thoughts and input as well. And then at city council, regular meetings on June 27th and, as I mentioned, July 11th, two different reports were presented to council, and obviously, public comments were heard at both of those meetings. So at the city council meeting on July 11th, you provided staff with a certain direction after significant deliberations. And in a nutshell, in terms of what we will be talking about tonight, that was to allow consideration of maximum of one medical cannabis retailer, that is the dispensary, as in previous parlance, but the correct term today is medical cannabis retailer, and also to allow one cannabis testing laboratory. There were certain restrictions that you imposed, broad restrictions at that time. Both facilities were, for instance, to be located only in an industrial zone. The sales from the medical cannabis retailer were limited in terms of hours of operation. No deliveries were allowed. You methodically went through various options and ruled that out. And you gave staff direction to ensure that there are adequate security measures at both So in response to your direction, staff drafted a draft municipal code amendment, and it addresses essentially four areas. The first is that we are proposing the addition of regulations regarding cannabis. That's number one in this image. Number two, we obviously need to amend our zoning matrix to include the new uses and identify where they would be located. We are also proposing that the city's social host liability ordinance be amended to include cannabis. And then number four is more of a technical matter, removing the existing cannabis prohibitions and personal cultivation standards from one section of the code to another. So let's delve into these in a little bit greater detail. So the heart of the draft ordinance that you will be considering tonight is the regulatory ordinance, and that creates a legislative framework for both the medical cannabis retailer and the lab. It creates new permits, one of which is called a commercial cannabis business permit, and that is the permit that would be ultimately issued to the operators of these facilities. This ordinance provides a selection process framework for that, not the details, but the broad outlines of it as well. And that will be under your purview ultimately to grant those permits. As you are probably aware, an employee at either facility is required to obtain a cannabis employee permit. That would be handled administratively at the staff level, but it is an important part of the overall ordinance. The ordinance also includes an operations agreement, which would be entered into with these business entities to detail the standards of operation. The draft ordinance also deals with issues such as transfer of business locations and ownership, and then renewal revocation and appeals procedures as well. Other topics addressed in the ordinance include, of course, security per your direction. The standards in the ordinance have been reviewed and approved by the police department. Also, the ordinance deals with some of the nuts and bolts of operating such facilities. Obviously, no onsite consumption of cannabis, there are requirements for product tracking, odor control, and other operational needs. As I mentioned before, there are restrictions on sales. Not only are they limited in hours of operation, but they are by appointment only, so there is nobody walking in just off the street. You have to make an appointment. And obviously, those sales would be only to medical cannabis-qualified patients. As I mentioned before, no deliveries are related, non-retail storefronts are allowed, such as the store that would operate as the basis for deliveries. Another important part of the draft ordinance is that staff is suggesting that there be essentially a separation zone, a buffer zone, if you will, between these businesses and sensitive uses. And what staff is recommending is that that separation be at least 600 feet from four different sensitive uses. That is residential property, both public and private school sites, commercial daycare and youth centers as well. So there has to be at least a 600-foot separation between these two facilities and those types of land uses. There are also standards for the testing laboratory. All testing has to be performed per state law, and that entity must obtain and maintain the appropriate accreditation as required by the state. The ordinance also requires that the operators address the topic of community relations in two fundamental ways. The operators must provide contact information and have somebody available to respond to any concerns from the city and from nearby businesses. There is also a requirement for periodic meetings with city representatives and other interested parties regarding the ongoing operations. So now we shift to the second area of the draft ordinance, and this has to do with the zoning provisions. And this is based in large part on a hearing that was held by the Planning Commission in late October of this year. And pursuant to that hearing and the commission, commission is recommending that we adopt zoning classifications for these two uses, as shown on this image. One would be cannabis retailer medical, the other would be for the testing laboratory. Those have become part of the city's land use matrix, and that those businesses be located only in the industrial park zone, abbreviated as the M1 zone. The commission did consider the M2 zone, which is light industrial, but opted to locate these facilities only in the M1 zone. This image shows those two zones, the M1 and M2. The sort of pumpkin color, if that's the way it comes across on your monitors, hopefully that denotes the M1 zones. And if you look at this image generally, you can see, again with the 101 freeway here, 23 freeway here. These M1 zone areas are located at both sort of ends of the 101 corridor, here, what I will call the eastern portion of the city, and then here on the western portion of the city. So M1 zones are basically relegated to those two areas, which does include the Rancho Cano area up here, which extends quite a bit north of the freeway. M2, just as a point of reference, is limited in Thousand Oaks to only two small areas, right here and right here on the north and south sides of the 101 freeway. Again, very limited area, not recommended for these uses. So now if we basically merge those two principles, one being that these facilities can only be located in the M1 zone, and you apply the 600-foot separation, this is what begins to emerge. So in this image, what you're looking at in the sort of yellowish color, those are residential areas. The light blue are schools. And then the orange color denotes the M1 zone. And again, as a matter of reference, this is the 101 freeway here. This is Wendy Drive, Reno Road, to help get your bearings. So what this then shows us is that of that pumpkin area that I mentioned earlier, all the crosshatched areas would be excluded from consideration for these businesses. Here, that is due to the proximity of residential. Over here, there is a small school operating in the industrial area, and you can see what a 600-foot radius looks like around that location. So you can see that the 600-foot buffer does create basically a separation zone. For instance, all the Chappelle housing here, between it and the balance of the M1 zone. So these businesses would only be located in this area that does not have the crosshatch, and that is shaded in orange in this image, just in those two areas. So this is the western end of the 101 corridor where the M1 is located. Now we look at the eastern end of the city, and again, you can see the effect of the 600-foot buffer. Several areas are completely excluded, and then you have a significant buffer here along Hampshire Road on the north side of it, reflecting all of this residential area on the south side. And then this area north of the freeway between it and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, you can also see the separation due to Westlake High School, which is located right here. As another point of reference, this is Westlake Boulevard, right here, generally in north-south direction. So you end up with a reduced area for potential location of these businesses, but a reasonable area in terms of alternate potential sites. So now let's talk briefly about the third element of the draft ordinance, and that is the city's social host ordinance, social host liability ordinance. And as you know, there are civic penalties or community service requirements for any locations where unruly gatherings, quote-unquote, involve underage drinking. And this is an important ordinance, and what staff is recommending is that that ordinance be expanded to include individuals under the age of 21 that are consuming cannabis without a doctor's recommendation. So it would expand the same civil penalties that currently exist for social host liability issues, and expand it to include individuals that are not only, would not only directly be underage, engaged in underage drinking, but also engaged in illegal cannabis use. And then finally, as I mentioned, there's a fourth element. This is comparatively minor. This is the relocation of existing provisions related to cannabis, from our zoning ordinance, which is Title IX of the code, to the regulatory ordinance, which is going to be located in Title V. That was also recommended by the Planning Commission. So that's an overview of the draft ordinance. In terms of looking forward, as I mentioned, this provides the legislative framework to control cannabis in the community, but we will be bringing back to you resolutions that establish specific standards for individuals seeking to apply for these permits, the review process, the applications themselves, related fees. We are anticipating that those will be brought to you for your consideration in December, and then anticipate, again, these are broad timelines, but in the first quarter of next year, that that would be the time when applications would be submitted and processed. And they would most likely be bringing the top candidates before you for your consideration in the second quarter of 2018. And that would be followed closely by the administrative processing of those related permits that I mentioned, both for the businesses and for the employees. So tonight's staff is recommending that city council approve Municipal Code Amendment 2017-70260 regarding cannabis per your direction from July 11th. And I have with me a panel of experts to my left to assist in answering any questions that you may have. Mr. Dave McPherson, which is the Cannabis Services Director for HDL Companies and the city's cannabis consultant, who has worked with us throughout this process. Jeff Ware, co-compliance manager to his left. And Patrick Heer, Assistant City Attorney at the end of the dais. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. Thank you for the presentation. It is a very complex item, and you put this nicely together in a comprehensive way. Mr. Adam has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. That 600-foot buffer that you mentioned, is that an industry standard that's come up in the past for other areas?
The state has a standard of, sort of minimum standard of 600 feet for schools, daycare centers, and youth centers, but does not include residential. So by inclusion of residential, we're actually exceeding state standards.
Okay. But do you still feel it gives a reasonable amount of area to locate one of these places?
I think that it is a reasonable amount of area because we are adding the residential, we're limiting it to one zone, which has a reasonable amount of area, but it is, as we just saw, comparatively limited to two areas in the city. But it's still, in my opinion, and I think I can speak for the team, that it provides a reasonable number of opportunities without being excessively restricted nor excessively open.
Okay. And one other question, as far as the ultimate selection process. Can you give us an idea of what kind of selection standard you're looking for as we go forward with this issuing a permit? And the kind of qualifications that you'll be looking at?
David McPherson, HDL. So what we're really looking in the application process is, one, is to make sure the matrix elements of that from the ordinance are adopted into that process. But also, you're looking at qualifications of the applicants, you're looking at community benefits, you're looking at compatibility, you're looking at local enterprise, you're looking at product safety and enhancement, you're looking at air quality issues, could be if they're using a building that has other occupants in it to that, if they're sharing a common HVAC system. And so those are some of the criterias that we'll be using, some of that. And then, of course, the proposed location and the business plan as for how their business model is designed to be successful. There's 10 criterias that will come forward with you that will clearly define what the expectations and the outcome should be and the scoring points associated with those for a very objective process.
Okay. Will prior experience be a criteria?
Not necessarily prior experience in itself, but it could be if you're a doctor, or you're a horticultur, or someone that understands science and medicine of the product. It can be other elements of that to give you some kind of professional knowledge of what you would be providing. So if you're providing instructions to someone what kind of product they should be taking for what kind of illnesses or things of that nature, that'll be very important that someone has that understanding ability to do that.
Okay. All right, that's good to know. And just one more question. Ultimately, how many candidates do you think you'll put before us? Were you narrowed down to one or two, or are you not sure yet?
We're not sure yet. I can't say that we've had significant interest.
Okay. Right. Good point. All right, thank you very much.
I do have a question for Mr. McPherson. This ordinance is very long, very detailed, obviously, as it should be. How does this compare to the other cities whom you represent? Is this kind of a standard formula, or how does ours differ from your other clients?
So this ordinance has kind of been developed, of course, each city is unique because they may limit the numbers or the type of activities that are occurring. But what this ordinance really has done is a reflection of about 100 attorneys and input from community folks, as we've gone through other agencies of the good, the bad, things that we didn't think about, and kind of fine-tuning it over time, but also reflective consistency of what expectations are going to be at the state level. Because that's really part of the big concern, is if you issue a permit here and they go to get to the state and they get rejected, and they say, "Well, you don't meet our standards." Well, we want to make sure that this ordinance is going to put them in a position to be successful getting a state permit as well. So it kind of meets both those high-end quality standards.
So I see that we are covering advertisement, we are So I see that we are covering advertisement, we are covering labeling and all that, although it's not going to be commercially available here. Are we just covering everything just in case anything happens? Is that what this is?
We're just looking at every angle and every, any hole that someone may take and try to manipulate.
Okay. And let's see. So we did cover the social host liability ordinance. I'm glad that we're adding cannabis to this. This was a main concern and one of the concerns. Does anybody else have any more questions before I call the speakers? Okay. We only have two speakers tonight. First one is Lori Robinson, followed by Jason Moriarty.
Good evening. I'm Lori Robinson, resident of Thousand Oaks for 26 years, married to my husband Greg for 38 years, and I've brought my mom, 92-year-old amazing woman that lives independently in Westlake, just to show you our family. I'm hoping tonight I can kind of help balance the dialogue for the other side of cannabis because we really should be having that in the Caneo Valley as well as across the nation. In June, I gave personal testimony here about the wrath from THC marijuana upon my oldest son Shane's overnight descent into what today is called cannabis-induced psychosis. Colorado now has five years of data compilation. Washington State has two years of such data. The Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area and the Washington State Northwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, 2017 annual publications, were summarized in a press release last week by Dr. Ken Finn, and he's offered his phone number as well. Board certified in pain medication and Colorado Medical Marijuana Scientific Advisory Council. Some of the summation. Cannabis use disorder is now the number-one admission diagnosis for adolescents being treated for substance abuse use. 145% increase in the number of drivers testing positive to marijuana-related fatal car crashes. Highest opiate overdose deaths on record in Colorado 2016 despite a very robust medical marijuana program. Also, emergency department and hospital marijuana-related admissions. In 2011, there were 6,305 admissions. In 2015, with just nine months reported, there were 10,901 admissions. Since the implications of legalizing marijuana are far ahead of public health, which include enabling drug use, from the adverse mental health disorders triggered to gateway opiate drug, to the danger to unborn babies from mothers who are now using medical pot during pregnancy, which affects fetal brain health, to the soaring THC driving impaired highway crashes. There's a myriad of ways THC marijuana, directly or indirectly, is harming communities. Since the medical marijuana dispensary being discussed here tonight will sell the entire marijuana plant, including THC marijuana strains, and a new one that just was created, THC A-Crystalline, 99.99% THC. And not just the cannabidiol, which is the non-psychoactive, with the ease of access and normalization, are all of you willing to take responsibility for every death or future lost to addiction, to associated crimes and thefts, to car crashes, to kids poisoned by accidental pot edibles, to seniors having cardiac events after eating a medical pot edible believing it would abate their chemotherapy-related nausea, to the suicidal and homicidal acts brought on by psychosis from the sale of marijuana in this community? Antidotes don't make good science. We need solid scientific evidence that cannabinoids, not dispensary cannabis, can be used for particular medical conditions. Hats off to Simi, Moore Park, Fillmore, Santa Paula, and Camarillo cities who have chosen kids-first and public safety. They've done their homework, researching that the cities with bans in existence already in Colorado and Washington State have less access to pot advertising, thus less pot use. Here's a study done by the Rand Corporation, Gateway to Curiosity: Medical Marijuana Ads and Intention and Use During Middle School. It's quite clear that the public does not comprehend the toxic harm marijuana has, 21st marijuana has on our kids. I'm with a group of parents called Moms Strong across the country, who are embedded with ER doctors, addiction psychiatrists, pediatricians, pharmacists, and neuroscientists, runs, anchors our website, trying to educate the public while fighting the promotion of pot. We are horrified how THC is being normalized and people refuse to believe what is happening to our kids. Tragically, my son is already one of the sacrificed guinea pigs in what's called the greatest social experiment of the 21st century, but he's not the last. My conscience is clear as I'm trying to educate and wake up the public. The next person to be annihilated by THC marijuana may be someone that you love and cherish. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. We have Jason Moriarty and now a third speaker, Joe Kyle.
Hello, council members. My name is Jason Moriarty. I'm a lifelong resident of Ventura County. I currently live in Newberry Park. Absolutely love it here. It's the greatest place to live. I think that we have a real opportunity to improve it by passing a cannabis ordinance. Not only is it obviously a good tax revenue source that we could use to improve our schools, to improve our parks and infrastructure, but it's also a way to improve the lives of many people. I have been involved in the cannabis industry since California first passed a medical marijuana law, and I have seen firsthand the benefits of this medicine from people with cancer to PTSD to epilepsy, and especially my mom. When my mom was in her 50s, she developed, what is it called, arthritis in her hands, really bad arthritis, and she got prescribed Vicodin and painkillers that she got terribly addicted to. These painkillers made it so that she couldn't sleep and created depression, which she also then got prescribed more drugs for, Xanax and Ambien's, and was literally a walking zombie. I got her some of the medicines that we were making, and at first, she had the same kind of stigma about it that you heard here about how bad it is and how many people die from it. But the fact of the matter is, these opiates and over-the-counter drugs kill way more people than cannabis ever has. It's far more addictive. You could put alcohol in there as well. And so I had to convince her to try this, to get off her meds that she had been prescribed. And literally, as soon as she accepted it and tried it, her quality of life improved immediately. She is now no longer on any of those over-the-counter drugs. She sleeps well. The pain in her hands is manageable. She's enjoying her life again. I hope that you all will allow other people like my mom the opportunity to have access to this medicine and improve their lives. And not only that, but take it out of the hands of drug dealers and gangsters and criminals and give the city the chance to make the money off it rather than, you know, these other bad people. Because kids will get it anyway. It's going to happen. They have access to it. So let's take control of it. Let's regulate it so that some of the things that she was talking about, in some ways, she made a point for it, because a lot of the kids are getting unregulated marijuana or they're getting synthetic marijuana that is made with chemicals and other things that causes these psychosis. But if we can control that, then we can save people and help people and make money off it that the city, the county can use to improve its infrastructure. So I just hope that all those things are considered and you all allow people access to this medicine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor. I'm a pro-TAM, City Council members and staff. My name is Joe Kyle. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. It's been a long year and a half now. I started the Thousand Oaks Medical Marijuana Outreach when the City Council banned the all uses of medical cannabis in last January, maybe December of last year. And it's been a long road trying to get this conversation to happen, and it's been an interesting road. I would like to say that going forward, this is the black market versus the gray market, you know, the regulated market now. And before, there are a lot of questions of what happened, what pesticides were used, and why cannabis helped or hurt a lot of people. And this is going into the future of state regulations, state different bodies that are actually looking after it, the CDFA. You have DPR commenting. You know, you guys know that that's why you have a consultant here. And so moving forward, it's just, it's going to be a completely different ballgame than we had in the past. So, you know, I think you guys know that, but I think the public really needs to know that and understand that this is a completely different model than what we've had in the past years. You know, the police will be able to know what is legal versus illegal, what entities are legal versus illegal, what medicine is tested versus not tested, and the patients will be able to know this. I would like to say that there are concerns on behalf of the patients' access because of only one dispensary. As we know, Ojai and other cities are allowing more. The city of Ojai has a much, much smaller population than here, and they're allowing three. I do understand that this city and the county and multiple other cities within this county have a go-slow approach, but do take into consideration that cities such as Oxnard, Ojai have made it simply ministerial to change the permits or to change the ordinance itself to the number of dispensaries that they would allow and not make it so that it has to go through an entire planning commission hearing, another first ordinance, and another second reading in order to implement and change the rules. Just food for thought there, you know, because there are other ways that other cities are taking it differently, just small, different approaches, still only thinking allowing one or a few, but have the actual ordinance modeled differently in future changes and modification. And talking to city staff, I understand that this is the approach that this council wants to take. But I do see it being interesting in the future if we were to want to add to those dispensaries, seeing that there were too many patients going to one location, talking to the Ojai dispensaries that are already opened and running. They're having a massive problem with the 24-hour appointment system. It's just customers and patients don't know about it. And so it's education as well. So I just hope that moving forward, the education continues because this permitting process is just the beginning. So, thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any speakers. So do we have any questions by council members? Not on this side and not on the other side either? Okay. Staff, would you like to respond to some of the comments made by the speakers?
We have no further comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and open it up for a council discussion and/or But we're not going to remain silent on this. So, Mr. Adam.
I'm here. Okay, great. Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion, move 8A municipal code amendment, adding the ordinance for commercial cannabis and modifying the zone and adding it to the social host ordinance.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I'm certainly going to support the motion. Just want to speak a little bit about our process. We went through, as I think some of the speakers alluded to, a fairly extensive outreach community process to make sure we got as much information on this issue as we could, both from a legal standpoint, also from a social standpoint, and listening to a variety of perspectives as it relates to both the medical and the recreational use. And tonight's action by the council, I think, strikes essentially what we heard prominently from the community, and that was that a single medical facility would meet needs of a number of people in our community. And in respect to some of the comments about the recreational use, based on surveys and public testimony, virtually very little support for recreational use facility here in our community. And so I think tonight's action by council, which I would expect to be unanimous, is a good reflection of where we are as a community on a very complex, as the number points out, and difficult issue. So I'm certainly going to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And Mr. Adam.
Yeah, I could just add some numbers to that because I just happen to have it here. When we did take that community survey, 56% of the community were for medical marijuana, and juxtaposed, 55% were against recreational. So I think the message was loud and clear. And as one of the speakers said, we are taking a go-slow approach purposely. You know, this is new ground for our city. It's new ground for a lot of cities, and I think that it's a conservative approach, and I think it's mirroring what the community has told us that they want. Thank you.
What I would like to add is that I feel comfortable with the feedback that we have received from the community. We did, as has already been stated, outreach, workshops, surveys, scientific surveys, and with that information and feedback in mind, we crafted this policy with the help of staff, and it was really no small task. I would like to say, though, that it is true that there are the five other cities in Ventura County which are banning this completely. And Port Huonimi now has the nickname of Pot Huonimi because it's just completely open, anything goes. So that is the extreme opposite of what some cities are doing. Again, I would like to thank staff for something that was very difficult to do, but you did it well. And I hope by taking these baby steps that we will all realize that we are making the right decision here tonight. So if there are no other questions, maker of the motion, you have final comments?
No more comment. Motion stands.
We can go to the vote, but I understand, Madam Clerk, there's a correction that needs to be made after. Okay. Go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 4-0 with Price absent, and your ordinance title is an ordinance adding Title V, Chapter 29, amending Sections 9-4.202 and 9-4.2105, repealing in its entirety Title IX, Chapter IV, Article 44, and amending Title V, Chapter 26 of Municipal Code regarding commercial cannabis, personal cannabis cultivation, and social host liability, MCA 2017-70260. And the ordinance title for consent item J is ordinance amending Sections of Municipal Code adjusting campaign contribution limits to reflect changes in California Consumer Price Index, CPI.
Okay, so that is the corrected version. Okay. So we're done with this particular item. There are no department reports, no committee, commission, board reports. And Mr. City Manager, anything you'd like to announce?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just want to remind everyone that our next regular City Council meeting will be on Tuesday, the 28th of November. Several items on the agenda relating to our purchasing ordinance update, our construction and demolition waste ordinance revisions. We have our annual report from our investment review committee, the second reading of the item that you just advanced, and our transit master plan will be held that evening as well. So that'll be Tuesday, the 28th. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the council, have a happy holiday, Thanksgiving holiday, and we'll see you on November 28th. Good night. Good night.